I'll do that kind of quietly this morning. All right, this is about 8:47. Public meeting in Commissioners' Court, Liberty County, Texas, August 27, 2024. And this public meeting discussion is over economic development. Discuss renewal of the tax abatement and economic development guidelines in Liberty County, Texas. The, as y'all know, we have existing the tax abatement economic development guidelines, and they are published online for all to see. But every two years, we have to renew those. So we're at the point now where we need to renew, and I believe really all that that we're renewing actually is the dates in the existing.
That is correct. The proposed economic development guidelines today that are the subject of this this public hearing and then on the agenda in the regular meeting, there are no significant or material updates to those guidelines, simply date changes.
Yeah. I did get a call the other day from a development group that commented on our guidelines and stated how good they are, that it's all spelled out, better than other counties that they've had discussions with. So I'm pleased with them. I mean, it, but again, it's every two years we have to renew the guidelines. And then, of course, in this case, we're just going to be changing the dates and then republish. So it, pretty happy with that. Anybody have anything they want to say? Now's the time. And for the folks that don't know where to find them, it's on the website, county website. And it's really easy to search your way through there. You just tap on economic development, and you'll see a widened vision of what all is inclusive, and these will be on there for you to look at. So we'll give it a few minutes, see if anybody has anything they want to say. Hearing nothing, then we'll close out and get ready for Commissioners' Court meeting. Catherine, you have anything you want to add to that, or we're pretty good?
No, sir.
Okay.
You've covered it.
Can I ask a quick question? What are the date changes, like for next fiscal year, is that it?
I believe they should only affect, hold on, let me look it up.
Okay.
One year or two years?
Two years.
They have to be updated for two years. Let me pull the document that you listed. The renewal date is? Yes, yes. But it'll go into effect if it's approved today.
August the 22nd.
Well, hearing no, no further questions or any comments, I'll close this meeting out, and we'll get ready for Commissioners' Court to begin at nine. All right. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It's August the 27th, 2024, about 9:01 a.m. Regular meeting of Commissioners' Court, Liberty County, Texas. Let the record show that Commissioner Karbowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Whitmire are here with us. I believe Commissioner Wilson has had an appointment this morning. So we do have a quorum established. We have business for the court, so we will begin. So if y'all would please, I stand, Lee's going to lead us in the pledges, and Sheriff's going to lead us in the invocation.
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, I want to thank you for the blessings that you give us. Thank you for the opportunities that you give us, Lord, to do good. And, Lord, thank you for letting us be here without fear of prosecution. And, Lord, I know there's a lot of things going on in this world. There's conflicts and everything, Lord. I just pray for peace. I pray, Lord, for Judge Knight, the Commissioners' Lord, and I thank you for the job that they do, and I said you've gotten them, Lord, and wisdom, and given them the things necessary, the tools necessary to do the things that they need to do for the good of all people in Liberty County, Lord. Lord, I know a lot of times that we have arguments and conflicts and much stuff, but, Lord, it's really important that we all come together and work together, especially during things like now with the budget year that's going on for all the people that in the county. And, Lord, we just got to take care of the employees. I ask a blessing of them. Thank you for their hard work. Thank you for the elected officials. And, Lord, be with us, keep us safe. Please forgive us when we fall short. Your Son Jesus, nay we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. Next item is notices and proclamations. And DeeDee, I don't have any notices or proclamations today, so we'll move on to public comment, and no one signed up for public comment today, so we're just going to keep right on rolling, okay? Declare conflicts of interest. Anybody have a conflict that they have today they need to?
No, I don't think so.
Everything good? Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Dwayne or Kim, we have any add-ons today?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, thank you.
Further consent agenda.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce, to approve the consent agenda as stands. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, one, from me, was consider and approve the amended proposed salaries and allowances for elected officials, Liberty County, Texas, for fiscal year 2024, 2025% to section 152.013 of the Texas Local Government Code. And, Dwayne, we had one little, what was it, addition hiccup?
The sentence was wrong. It's supposed to be crime by sentence.
Yeah, okay.
Leon, whether?
There's Brother Leon. Morning, Leon. All righty. So, any discussion about item number eight, one? Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, two. Well, I'm getting two of them on here today. That's odd. Consider and approve the quote for installation of security panic buttons from AIO Security Solutions in the amount of $12,400. This quote includes 12 panic buttons and two expanders for the following offices, which would be DPS, Gospel One, that's over on Caw Street, pretrial services and district clerk's office at the courthouse, district attorney's office on Treddy Street, Gospel Precinct Six in Cleveland, Gospel Precinct Five in Targeton, which requires an expander as well, and JP Three Office on Highway 146, which requires an expander. And what this is, we installed these several years ago, but occasionally we go back and get a poll and see, you know, who didn't get them in the, in the first go around and where the necessity is once again. And this is what we came back with a poll we took on how many we needed to have these installed, and that's the number. So I consider, appreciate your consideration. Motion from Greg, second from David, to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Eight, three, from Gospel Precinct Three, Mark Davison. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County, Gospel Precinct Three, and the Hardin Independent School District for one school resource officer. And this is just going to be a renewal, I believe. Is that correct, Kim?
Yes, sir. This is just the contract for the new school year, the 24-25 school year. It's based on salary benefits that are provided to both myself and Constable Davison. From the auditor's office, the school is responsible for 10 months of the 12-month salary and benefits.
Motion from Bruce, second from David, to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along to eight, four, from Sheriff. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County Sheriff's Office and Hardin Independent School District for one school resource officer. Well, school's open, Sheriff, so here we are. Yeah.
Turn it over to Catherine, to the wife.
Okay.
Judge, this, this is the same thing as with Constable Davison's contract. I believe the sheriff has SRO officer at the Hardin School District as well. They're responsible for essentially 10 months of the year. With the sheriff's office, I believe it is 171 hours on a 28-day pay period. That, that's really the only difference between the sheriff's department's contract and Precinct Three constable's.
What say the court?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce. I'll get Leon on that second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, five, from our tax attorneys over at Limebarger. Consider and approve the following private resale bids on liquid tax properties. Jay Porche, number one, at Pid number 16845 for $2,000. Number two, Jay Davis, property ID is 141965 for $5,000. Also, number three is Jay Davis, Pid number 141966 for $5,000. Number four is Wade, Pid number 68357 for $4,500. And the last one is for R. Washington, Pid number 58583 for $8,000. Is there any discussion on this?
Make a motion to approve all five.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, economic development transportation for Mr. Douglas. Consider and approve the renewal of the tax abatement and economic development guidelines for Liberty County. David, what you got?
Gentlemen, this is a renewal of what Limebarger did for us two years ago.
I can't hear you, Jim.
You're going to have to come up to the- You're going to have to come up to a microphone because it's, he can't hear you.
I was hoping not to have trouble.
It's okay. Actually, Bickerstaff, I believe, did the-
Bickerstaff.
Yeah. Thank you. This is a document that we put in place two years ago. Catherine has looked at it. Limebarger did the original document. It's a very important document for, for the county to have in place. It has to be renewed every two years. It gives you the ability to do tax abatements and negotiation for development. Now, we've seen a lot of things come down the road lately, and, and I'd like to think in my little world that our time is coming. We visited with a prospect a month ago that basically, I'm just going to call it the Devers Project, and it involved a site, a 300-acre site over in the Devers area. They were looking at approximately 250 employees with a pay scale that started at 69,000, a five million square foot building with a cost of $7 billion. So when you compete with these people, we already know that we're competing with two parishes in Louisiana and with Jefferson County. And Jefferson County is a tough competitor. They pull the socks out. So when the right time comes, this document is going to be important. You gentlemen are going to have to decide, what are you willing to give up for what you're going to get? And some of these projects, it's going to take, it's going to take a substantial tax abatement to entice them into the county. But it's good business. The tax abatements don't last forever, and when they go away, the cash register goes to the gym. So we need to get this done. It's a little overdue right now, but let's get it done, and let's get it on the books, and it'll be good for two years. It's just a few days out, so we're good on that. We're good on that. The, the other side of it is, it spells out what the, the time limit is on these abatements. And, of course, like a 381 tied together with a, say, a 312, which is a tax abatement with the tax code of the state of Texas, it, 10 years is maximum. But we can always set it somewhere between 15 minutes and 10 years, almost. I've seen them go from three years to five years to 10 years. When Global TV came in over in Dayton, they got a 10-year. And it was because, at the time, I was city manager over there, and we were just flat hungry. Yeah. It was a good move. Yeah. It was. All right, what say the court?
Make a motion, David.
Okay, go. Motion from Leon.
Yeah.
Second from Bruce. Thank you.
And Judge, just briefly, I would like to note that these guidelines are very specific to tax abatements only. These are not applicable under law to Chapter 381 agreements.
Right. It's just in general. That's correct.
Correct.
And this is just a renewal.
Yeah, yes. Mr. Kimbrough, whom you are all familiar with, wrote these guidelines two years ago.
Yeah. All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next one up is eight, seven, from Commissioner Karbowski. Discuss and take action regarding the engineering and permit office being closed to the public. I just opened that one up. Well, there's Melinda. Good morning.
I'm all the way to the back. Sorry, Judge. As it stands right now, I am opposed to being open to the public, only for, basically, we are over, seriously overcrowded in that office. We have four employees upstairs, which my are inspectors, with one desk in the hallway leading to the two offices. Downstairs, I had to put one person in a storage area that they share with the person on the front desk. I have no receptionists to sign people in if they just walk in. And as we know, they don't come in one at a time. When they come to get a permit, if it's open to the public, they bring the whole family and all the kids and everything else. We do this by appointment, and it has been working out very well. As a matter of fact, this year, from January 1st to 8/27, we've done 4,131 permits out of that office. All right. Our lobby's only 140 square feet, for those of you that have not been to the office. It's a very small office. They are to remain in that lobby area while the girls are working, because the office area where we work is not large enough to have them come to their desks to help them with their permits. So anybody that's in that lobby area hears everything that's going on with each individual that are filing for permits.
We do have plans in the new budget to hire a receptionist.
Well, that would help, yes.
Okay. And the, I understand, you know, the public's concerned that, you know, it's not open to the public. Well, it is open.
It is open. All they have to do is make an appointment, and they can come. We tell them that all the time.
You have to call, you have, if they, for some reason, don't pick up the telephone when you call, then you get a recording, and you leave a message on the recording, and they will call you back.
And it goes straight to their voicemail.
Yeah.
I mean, it's straight to their email, in which they do, whenever they have a break, they call people back. Nine times out of 10, people don't leave a message. And I hear them. My, my office door is open all day long. I hear the girls constantly answering the phones and their messages. They have to play them, and most of them are in Spanish, which I don't understand. But, you know, I do hear them, and they are working.
And you'll have office in Santa Fe, correct?
Yeah, soon as, soon as we get it built, you're going to have probably two people up there.
And that doesn't even include our mail-ins. All of our builders, reception installers, and communication plants, they come in by mail, and they have to be done the day that they arrive. And we've asked them to limit them to 10 per packet, but that doesn't always happen.
Yeah.
Comcast likes to add a few extras when they send all their stuff in, you know? But we are working to the best of our abilities.
Well, I feel our primary, primary job is to serve the public. And as far as overcrowding, the city fire marshal of Liberty should have had an occupancy sticker in that room saying how many people can come in that waiting room. And we're just going to have to start telling these folks, they're going to have to wait outside if that occupancy gets, exceeds that amount.
That lobby is 100 square feet for occupancy on just a room.
And has the fire mar-
That's 1.4 people.
Has the fire marshal been in there?
No, I can definitely bring them out here and have them give me occupancy.
We, we do-
But you have to understand, they're not allowed past the door into the office, so we only have to do an occupancy on that front lobby.
Correct.
You know, the argument of open to the public, it's twofold. You know, here at the courthouse, it's open to the public, but we also have security at the door.
Correct.
It's another, another problem.
Same with the tax office.
Well, tax office, and then also, Kim, is your office open to the public? No?
She doesn't serve, she doesn't serve the general public.
I don't really serve the public, but my office is open to the public. We go to the door and then walk in.
That's the same here, you know, the same, same cause here. The main thing is, we put this in place a while back, you know, with the COVID in mind, and yeah, it's working, but it does get a few folks in the public disgruntled, because it's that moment where they go, I need a permit now. And you don't get a permit like right now. You know, you make an appointment, you come in, and you fill out the application.
The average citizen may get one to two permits in his entire life. So, I mean, this is something, you go to the website, and even the website doesn't say anything about, the office is not open.
Yes, it does.
I have looked at the website, seen, and it says appointments.
Yeah, it's appointments only.
But it doesn't say, it doesn't say, no, it doesn't say only.
Okay.
So it's- We can fix that.
And the reason I put this on there was because of the buseting time that it is that if engineering permit department needs extra people, now is the time to look at it and talk about it.
Well, we, and I'll say, if you just would have walked by my office and visited with me, would have had this already taken care of. But I've already discussed it with Dwayne. We are adding a receptionist. I talked to Melinda. And that is the best we could do at the moment with consideration of how large the office is. And you can't have 20 people in that front room. And unfortunately, some people come to town, and they bring their whole family, and they go grocery shopping after they go to the permit office. So I'm just looking after the safety and security aspect of that office, the fluid way it can accept the public, the consideration of the restraints on the size, and the best way. There's always a better way, Bruce. There always is. But unless you find me a bigger office with a larger reception room where they could sit and wait, we're stuck with this for the moment. And until we can, well, get a receptionist, maybe that will alleviate some of the confusion. I'm hoping so. At least it'll be somebody there to answer the phone when the phone rings, and not a recording.
There's no question, the permit department probably is the busiest department, and that and the tax office is probably the two busiest places in the county. But we do get a lot of complaints.
Well, I know. I'm sure they call you, they call us, they call y'all, they call the judge's office.
Ah, and we were, I think, the main thing, don't know, to look, see if there's a better way we could serve the public, you know, not, not, not critical of anything that you're doing.
Oh, yeah.
But we're just one looking.
Well, I'm hoping-
No matter how big an office you have, you're probably going to have to restrict the number of people that comes in there.
Yeah.
Some way to take a number and say, all right, well, but-
You know, the bad part about it is, if it's in the weather days, you know, it might be pouring down rain, it might be 108 degrees, there's not a shade tree around there.
No.
You know, the-
David, didn't you have a numbering system when you was open to the permit department?
We just, we started with COVID. Up until that, that's kind of a unique business over there, in that, and I'm not being critical of any ethnic issue, but the Hispanic community, because language issues.
They bring their whole family in.
They bring the whole family in, because the kids were the transfer.
Right.
And at the time, we didn't have but one Hispanic member.
And all my kids are Hispanic.
So the kids all came in, mom and dad came in, sometimes Grandma and Grandpa came in. We tried to work them into a desk. You ended up with six, seven people around the desk. Do that a couple of times in a very confined area, you get chaos. So when COVID came along, we elected to go to a home at home. That seemed to work very well. We never had a numbering system. It was just, get in line, call us, we'll give you an appointment time and an appointment date. And when that date and time arrived, first went to the door, retrieved the person, the people, all men, and business was conducted. Now, one of the things that may change a little bit is, once this building is built up in Santa Fe, you're probably going to see some of that level of business transfer up in that area of Precinct Four, or Precinct Three.
But even when they come back for an appointment, they just one person come back, not the whole thing.
For an appointment, we're told them that no extra people are allowed to come in, just the person.
But if you had to open, open, you could tell them the same thing. Look, everybody else has got to stay outside. We're only dealing with this one person.
But the whole family comes in, and then they say, oh, we-
Then you don't let them in. You come back and-
How am I going to not let them in if the doors are locked? None of us are in that lobby area, is what I'm saying. We're all behind a locked door, so they can't walk through.
It's hard to put those people in.
Yeah, it's hot. I get it.
No weather protection, or you know, rain protection.
Well, I've even seen-
They don't sit in the car, I guess.
I've even seen the tax office in Cleveland, people lying around the building trying to get in there. So, I mean, it, it is what it is. I mean, we, our job is to serve the general public, and-
They have more space at the tax office in Cleveland. Catherine, you have a question?
I would just say that the, the engineering and permitting department, it is, in fact, their own department, and so long as they are open to the public and accessible to the public, whether that's by appointment only or something else, Ms. Holliday can adopt a policy dependent upon what's best for her department.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see what happens after the new budget kicks in in October with a receptionist.
Yeah, they're under-
And hopefully, they will be a valid receptionist. Yeah.
I, I will make sure.
Yeah. And then, of course, after the, the annex is built in Colony Ridge, I'd like to see what happens then, too, so.
Because I'm really thinking all the Cleveland individuals and people, and even in Tarkington, would use that office more than coming all the way into town.
Yeah.
Because they ask us all the time, don't you have another office? No, I'm sorry, we don't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Table it.
I'd say we can either table this or take no action. You take your pick. You take your pick.
Make the motion, we table.
Motion from Leon to table.
I'll second it.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
At least tabling it, we can bring it back up when we-
Yeah. After, I'd say after November, let's see what, no, excuse me. We'll give it till November and we can see what it looks like and see if it's, uh, alleviated some of the problem. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion is tabled. Okay. Number eight eight from Commissioner Arthur. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County Precinct Two and Liberty County Emergency Service District Number Seven. Provide mutual services to the public at a reduced expense by avoiding duplication of equipment, manpower and other resources. It's your standard interlocal-
Standard renewal.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion, David, second from Leon to approve further discussion. Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight nine from Sheriff. Consider and approve the fourth and final option of the current contract for the use of the gun range by the air marshals, which will end September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Sheriff, might want to come on up here and visit with us so Leon can hear you and, and the whole world can hear you.
Now, he's got one, he just lost it right there.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is just a renewal of the contract, it's the fourth and final year. We have actually a five-year contract and they're taking the fourth option after it. There's no reduction in fees, no anything added to it, it's just a renewal of the contract.
Okay.
We'll have to get another contract starting next year.
Yes.
Neither way, bro.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Number eight ten from Rick Brown over in the tax office. Consider and approve the twenty twenty-four, uh, for tax billing budget estimate.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, y'all.
We're doing great today.
Um, so I'm here on behalf of Richard. Um, this is our budget estimate. You guys have a copy of it? Was it in there or no?
Um, I do on my desk, yeah.
Um, so postage is what it is. Um, that's gonna be the same anywhere. Um, they gave us a quote, uh, ten percent up, um, compared to what we did last year. Also have last year's, of course, with the growth, we're gonna have more accounts, we're gonna have more mailings. So that's just a naturally occurring thing that's gonna go up every year. Uh, Master's Touch, we've been with them for a while and they do a really great job. Um, we'd like to continue using them.
Okay. Y'all have any questions?
We spent sixty-five thousand dollars in tax debt for postage.
Um, that's not just the postage. The postage is actually broke down, um, I'm not sure.
It was forty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three hertz and forty cents.
You metal there lately?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. Start keeping care of your pigeons, you know?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion from David, second, I think that was from Greg.
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
I have one more.
All right, don't run off yet. Number eight eleven from Richard Brown. Consider and approve signing the contract for collection of property ID assessments for West Point Villages.
Correct. So you guys, as far as I know, are all familiar with this. It was discussed prior. Um, I know the contract was sent out and approved before we sent it to the city of Dayton. Um, they met last week and they approved and signed it. So I have the signed contract here, um, ready for you guys to-
Kathy?
Uh, I have reviewed this contract. All this does is dictate how, uh, the tax office will collect, uh, those, uh, public improvement district fees that are assessed for West Point Villages.
Kim or Dwayne, any question? Good?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank you. Well, yeah.
Okay.
Have ink pen, we'll sign.
Perfect.
Lee? And she'll probably get that to you just shortly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up here. Number eight twelve from Sheriff. Consider and approve transferring three old filing cabinets. These must be old, from the Liberty County Sheriff's Office to the Plum Grove Municipal Court.
Oh, they're working. They're work- They're, they're working, they're dusty, they're, they're still at the old office. It's ones we couldn't use and they're very old. I was at a Plum Grove City Council meeting and Chief Legoria said that they didn't have any money in the budget for, uh, filing cabinets. We happen to have three or four over there. And I was just asking, ask if we could donate it to them and I said I'd put it in Commissioner's court and see if y'all would approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from David, second from Greg.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, thank you, gentlemen. Those are complete with coffee stains on top, correct?
Judge, there's so much dust in there, you can rub them.
There you go. All right. Number eight thirteen from, uh, our Fire Marshal, Bill Huggett-Miller. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County and the city of Plum Grove, Texas, regarding debris removal services. Bill?
Let me come up there, Judge.
Please. And I, I got your, I got the request the other day and of course, it was tossed to you and to Kathy. The, the, my question always is gonna be, it's their municipality.
So in order for, since we're kind of the emergency management group over the city or that particular city, in order for FEMA to reimburse us for debris removal for that city, we have to have an interlocal agreement. And that's basically what this is all about.
Kathy?
Uh, I, I agree with Fire Marshal. Uh, if y'all recall, a few months back, we had a meeting, um, with our, uh, debris cleanup contractor. And in order for them to go into municipalities and collect under our contract, uh, we would need an interlocal agreement. There's clearly a valid public purpose here. Um, I, I've looked at this contract, I, I think it's fine, I'd recommend approval.
Okay.
Neither way, bro.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from David. I should, I'm glad you got that second.
Thank you, Bill.
That's your neck in the woods.
Absolutely.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight fourteen from Ms. Holliday over in Permits and Inspections. Consider and approve the new RV park in precinct one on County Road four fourteen with twenty-six RV spots, owners living on adjacent property. Bruce, you know about this, it's your-
Yes, yes, sir, I surely do.
Okay.
It's, uh, do we even have a choice of approving or disapproving this?
Not really, but I'm bringing everything to y'all now, so you're way ahead. I wanna give it to y'all.
I appreciate it.
To the Commissioners first before I bring it forward. Uh, this gentleman has five acres, his homestead will be his right next to the, is adjacent to the property. He's already turned in his, uh, plans for the, for the park itself. It's very neat, um, everything's off-road, uh, the septic system is approved. So I just need y'all's approval.
Yeah, I've looked at the plans and stuff on this. Uh, there's not a lot of heavy traffic going down that road. I just, last year repaved that road, so, uh-
Yeah, the road's in really nice shape.
Yeah.
It's like point four miles from fourteen oh nine.
Yep. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Number eight fifteen from Ms. Holliday. Consider and approve a replat of Hutten Estates in precinct two. This was originally approved as the Whitner Estates. This is a replat on two lots off of Highway one oh five and County Road twenty-one sixty-six in Cleveland. LJA Engineering Letter of Approval is attached in the packet. Um, Melinda or Greg, y'all got anything?
I hope we approve.
Second.
Motion from Greg to approve, second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't sit down yet, Melinda got one more for you. Eight sixteen is consider and approve the LJA Engineering Invoice Number two oh two, four two five, four four one, dated, uh, eight five twenty-four, in the amount of ten thousand, seventy-eight dollars, eleven cents for the whole freshwater supply well project using ARPA funds. Uh, Cindy Birchfield has signed the invoice, so we know that they've had the opportunity to review.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh-
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Leon to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, eight seventeen, uh, from Mr. C. Good morning, Mr. C. Consider and approve and execute the following addendums to the contract with White Construction Company for the Northwest Annex Project. Addendum A, construction budget of four point seven million dollars. It's previously discussed and approved by Commissioners Court on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Addendum B, guaranteed maximum price of four million, six hundred thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, eleven cents, which was previously discussed and approved by Commissioners Court on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, with noted waiver of fifteen thousand for the pre-construction service fee. And number C, or item C addendum, guarantee maximum construction time of three hundred and sixty-five calendar days. Uh, addendum D is a wage rate requirement. Harold, uh, you wanna elaborate?
Yeah, some of this has already been approved, but this is actual addendums to the contract. So now we can plug the numbers in since y'all have approved them and have you signed them.
Okay.
Neither way, bro.
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Uh, one question on the guaranteed maximum construction time of three hundred and sixty-five calendar days. Jim, are there any rain dates inclusive in here to consider?
Yes, sir, yes, Judge.
Okay, all right. I mean, it never rains in Liberty County, right? Throw that out there. Okay. Okay. Number eight eighteen, uh, from Mr. C. Not acknowledge and accept the payment and performance bonds in the amount of four million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars from White Construction Company for the Northwest Annex Project. That's the next step. Yeah. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight nineteen from Mr. C. Consider and approve and authorize request for White Construction Company to proceed with notice construction of the Northwest Annex Project to begin October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
And it's about time. Make a motion to approve.
Jim Snyder with White Construction is here. Jim, you wanna come up and give us any, uh, words of wisdom about what you think the, uh, project, uh, what the timeframe and any particulars?
We're ready to go. We've been, been, uh, subcontracting with folks already, um, getting material procurement done. Schedule's ready to go, we're ready to go.
Good.
Pull the trigger and we're gone.
Sounds great.
Yes. Let's get her done.
Yes, sir.
Gig them.
Gig them.
All right, what say the court?
I made the motion.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Harold, got a few more here for you. Number eight twenty, uh, considering and approve soliciting bids for road materials.
Yeah, they're, uh, paying in sometime first, part of option. We'll get started.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, motion from David. Is that a second, Bruce?
Uh, Greg.
Okay. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-one from Mr. C. Consider and approve soliciting proposals for disaster debris removal services. Since that time again.
Yeah, we already got this in, uh, in motion, ready to go out. And we've discussed it several times and I think everybody agrees we're gonna do this, but we call this FEMA money and wanted a separate item.
Yes.
Neither way, bro, yes.
Second.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight twenty-two from Ms. McMillan over in Indigent Healthcare. If any of you wanna come up and visit with us, this is to consider and approve the updated contract with Turnkey for healthcare personnel and administration at Liberty County Jail for the Liberty County Sheriff's Office. This is for the new budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, give us some-
Okay.
Good news and bad news.
Well, um, it's not too bad. Um, we're, we're at that three-year renewal point already. So I think, um, the initial one we did was October twenty twenty-one and we're already, we're already here. So we went through, there's only a couple of changes in this new contract. And there's not really a lot other than, um, of course, we did, um, we are adding more staffing, because of just the increased inmates that were treating medically. Um, they feel like they need more support, uh, and, uh, needing a registered nurse and another LVN. So that was the major cause that went up to employ those two additional staff. But we really feel like it's gonna contain cost, you know, inside the jail instead of, um, you know, so much going out that this may not be necessary with having more medical support inside the facility. Um-
Band-aids and thermometers.
Yes, so we think it's gonna be good though. I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna be good and save us money in the long run. So, um, the other changes were, which this was, these are kinda good, um, other good things. Uh, the ADP, they did raise it from the last First Amendment that we made. We've only had one amendment done to the contract and we raised that to three hundred on that last one. So we upped it again and this one to three thirty. Um, also the per diem rate that goes along with that was at one oh five on the First Amendment and they, we lowered that to ninety-seven cents. So we did go, we did go a little bit lower. Um, the other thing is this contract is renewable for four years instead of the three, so we're gonna go four. Uh, with that, our percentage is gonna go from two point nine five to two percent if we do the four. So that's our cost of living, um, you know, annual percentage raise that they, every contract has. But, um, they, they were willing to lower that down to two percent if we go four years. So, um, I think, uh, did, did y'all have time to review it?
We did, everything looks good.
Good. Well, Dwayne's not sweating over there yet, so I'm just watching him to see what happens.
I know, I know, it's, it's hot, it's costly.
The comments?
Get the comments?
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your work on this.
You betcha. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, 23, from over in Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarthy's office, county attorney. Consider and approve the variance for the movement of proposed drainage easement in Section Three of Remington Place subdivision located Liberty County, Texas. Remington Place. Leon, is that in your precinct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Judge, I'm going to ask for a little assistance from Mr. Pickett today.
Yeah.
And Lee, do you mind if we turn on the Elmo so I can show the court the map of the proposed easement? Perfect. Okay, so, um, as the agenda item states, this is in Remington Place, and Mr. Pickett came to me um, a few months back in regards to one of his clients. There is a, if you look at the map on the screen, uh, the yellow indicates an existing drainage easement, um, an easement that has not yet been built, uh, but is platted. They are asking to move, move that over. If you can, you can see the proposed in blue, and I believe in your packet, there's a document signed by all lot owners agreeing to, uh, the movement of this proposed easement.
And the developer, because it's acquired by the restricted covenants, covenants for that subdivision, and he approved it too.
So we, we would recommend approval.
It's hard to develop that with a drainage easement right through the middle.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Number 24 and number 25, uh, we need to move into executive session on these particular ones.
Judge, I would like to add that 25 is a duplicate item.
Is what?
Is a duplicate item.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Um, let me ask you about that, Catherine, because it has different dollar amounts.
It does, but what we're hearing today is the dollar amount contained in item 24.
Okay.
It's the same contract.
Okay, uh, this will be under Local Government Code 551.071, correct?
Yes.
It's consultation with attorney?
And, and in regards to contracts being negotiated.
551.0725. Okay, so I got a motion for Bruce. Move to executive session. Now, you're second. Got a second from Greg. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. We're in executive session.
I'll do a program. I'll add everything and do a program and send it to you, Josh.
Okay, we're out of executive session, back into regular session at, uh, 10:14. And we have two items to consider from the executive session. Item number one, uh, executive, closed session meeting will occur regarding the following matters. A pursuant to Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.0725, deliberations regarding contract being negotiated. It's regarding the road use, ma'am?
Go up to 24. That's, that's not a voting item.
Number 24, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But still, we're, we'll go ahead with the, the candidates. Uh, consider, number 24 is consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Bahia Pipeline LLC for the use of county roads in multiple precincts in Liberty County, Texas in exchange for prepaid damages in the amount of $750,000. What say the court?
Move it with approval.
Second.
Motion from Greg. Second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries.
I would also, just in case Commissioner Wilson missed it, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to add up everybody's mileage in their particular precinct. I'm going to send the list of roads out to you, um, and I'm going to do a pro-rata share of that $750,000. So when you do start estimating repair costs, um, based on damages, uh, you can let me know.
Okay. Number 25, also in consideration, is, uh, consider and approve road use agreement between Liberty County and Bahia Pipeline LLC for the use of county roads in multiple precincts in Liberty County, Texas, in exchange for prepaid damages amount of $500,000. And this one, the first one took care of it.
Maybe we take no action on that.
Okay, got a motion from Greg, take no action. Second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion carries. Okay. Motion from Bruce and second from David to adjourn, uh, all in favor, say aye.